I thought Julia came in. Oh, there she is. Hi, Julia. How are you?
Very good.
All right, good afternoon and welcome to our legislative work session, February 21st. We don't have a large agenda today, but let's get started. Susan, you're up. We're going to talk about HVAC units for apartments. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, I did some research regarding some standalone HVAC units within apartment buildings and this came up with the question about old apartment buildings that've got HVAC units, one for a whole apartment. So, when people are smoking, the ventilation encompasses the whole building. So, there's the cross ventilation that's coming to everybody. So, doing the research, discovered that the 2012 mechanical code requires that all newly constructed apartment buildings be equipped with standalone HVAC units. So, that was good to find out. So, that the 2012 code actually dates back to around 2010 because it starts a little bit, a few years ahead. So, the apartment buildings like Addison Court, so all the new apartment buildings that are in town have individual HVAC units. So, that's good to know, that going forward, they all have the standalone, so there's no cross ventilation that's happening. To go back, and I got a quote from a local HVAC company, to go back and take all the old apartment buildings, whether they be the big multiplex ones-
Or split up houses.
Or the old, just a house that's been split up. You take one, and this is just for an 800 square foot apartment, it costs anywhere from $8,000 to $10,000 per unit to put in a new HVAC system in because you have to go in and cut in all the duct work, and that's for a standalone unit. So, it's very costly because they're individual units.
Does that contemplate the new ductless systems that they have?
The split units? It's called a split unit, I think.
Is it?
Just goes on the wall.
Yeah, yeah, and goes outside, yes.
It did not.
Yeah.
That was just for a standard.
I just looked at one of those, and they're expensive, too.
Yeah, we put one in.
They're up there.
We put one in our old office on Church Street, and the price was comparative.
We don't, there's no way for us to know how many of those split up homes that we have that have common vent. Is there any way for us to tell that?
I do have, I can do a report in our landlord licensing database and give you a number of registered apartment buildings, and in that, I can tell by the year. So, I can give you a number of ones that, because there's, we don't have a great number of brand-new ones.
Right.
And I can tell you ones that have been built from 10,000, I mean, from 2010.
That are covered under the code.
Uh-huh. So, I could provide you with a report. There, I can tell you that I think there's going to be a large number of the apartment buildings because the majority of them were built, obviously, prior to 2010.
Yeah, I think part of the issue was, this particular issue that brought this up was if there's an old house converted, an older house converted.
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess, you know, you have a way to tell any of those, you know, if they have, that their systems are not, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to tell on those.
It would be hard to determine because I would guess that some of those houses that have apartments, the old houses, some, some people may have put a new HVAC system in there.
Yeah, it could be.
So, it's hard to tell-
Yeah.
-who has one and who doesn't. The city of Salisbury does not actually do their own HVAC inspections. They're hired out for third party. They're done third party. So, we would not have a reporting mechanism for me to say, okay, I can tell by permits.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I don't have somehow to be able to tell. So, without going into each, each of them individually, it'd be near impossible.
Mark, from a legal point of view, going back, do we have any issues if we knew who they were to make them-
Upgrade.
Upgrade.
I, I mean, I think the current law definitely is going to grandfather in-
Yeah, that's-
-any of those pre-existing structures. However, if you do a replacement unit or renovation, I think we might be able to pick them up.
Ah, that's a good.
So, you know, when they have to replace the system, which maybe only every 20 years or so, if you're lucky, at that point, I think you could use the argument for the health and safety that, to make them do that. But it would have to be a major, it wouldn't be a repair job.
And that's something that I would need to look in the HVAC code because it might already be in there.
Yeah.
Once it's replaced, they would have to go back up to today's standard.
I mean, for example, when you replace now, you have to follow the state, the federal standards for what type of refrigerant is used.
Yeah.
You can certainly argue that it should be a separated venting system.
I guess my question is, the 2012 mechanical code, is that, was that part of the international housing standards or something that was adopted a few years ago, or is this-
It's, yes, it's-
State of Maryland?
That was two years ago, wasn't it?
Yeah.
We should be at 2015 now.
Yeah, we are. Yeah.
2015.
And that's included in the same, so that was, that just dates back.
Because that was the ones that were upgraded-
Yes.
When it first came on.
Yes. So-
Well, how would we even know if someone's going to upgrade their?
We don't because we don't-
Because we don't-
We don't permit and inspect.
You don't permit those?
We don't, we don't permit or inspect. Now, we can start permitting and inspecting, and then we would know.
You okay?
I'm going to make it.
Don't put me here.
I mean, we could start inventory. I mean, when we do inspections of rental units and things like that, you could certainly have someone make a note of whether they have a separated venting system. Yeah, just to add it.
How often do you inspect rental?
We do a random inspection, and we were supposed to inspect each rental once every three years, but that, I will stress, and I will be discussing that with you again soon, is that that is a voluntary program, it's not mandatory. It needs to be mandatory because we need to make sure that the rentals are code compliant.
Okay, that's good.
And, yes, at that time, that would be a great opportunity for us to go in, and we can do an inventory. We can go in and we can check that, and we can put it into our database. So, then I can actually give you a report in a few years saying, of, of the apartment buildings, this is how many have new HVAC standalone systems, and these are the ones that do not. But I have to be able to get in. But while it's voluntary, I can't get in to every, to all of them.
You could also fine contractors for installing an illegal system, too, even if you weren't, you know, getting a permit. So, if it was later discovered that somebody did it, they could be fined.
Correct.
I know, whenever I called the HVAC guy and say, you know, you need to come check my air conditioning or charge it, they started asking me 15 questions about whether or not, you know, they can put the type of refrigerant in that, because they don't want to violate that law.
Uh-huh.
I think one of the things that we are going to struggle with is there are a tremendous amount of apartments that are legal, you know, doing everything right and have, that don't have this issue. I think the, to try to get our arms around exactly how many of these split up that have common duct work, how many do we have? And how much time are we going to spend talking about that kind of thing? Because we could do it by complaint as, as a kickoff. If someone says that there's a problem, we could, we could start from there. But just to try to go out and, I don't know how you'd do that.
I'm concerned about-
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm concerned about the unintended consequences. I'm concerned about the unintended consequences because what will end up happening is people that have affordable housing, ultimately, they'll end up having to pay for it.
Somebody's going to pay for it.
Yeah. And, and then it makes our housing less affordable because people that are living in these broken up houses, they, in my observations, they aren't generating that much capital. I know I used to live in one, and I'm sure it's shared duct work, but we didn't have air conditioning, and my neighbor was good enough to go outside and smoke. But, you know, I would be concerned, I would be more interested in something that says, moving forward, we aren't allowed to have this shared duct work and what, I think what that'll do is-
And that's in place.
And that's in place.
That's in place?
Yeah.
I mean, for the, I mean, for old homes, when people are breaking them up into separate apartments.
They can't do that anymore.
They can't do that anymore.
They can't do that anymore? Okay.
Yeah.
So, I mean, what are we, what are we doing this for? Because new housing standards will require that people have their own-
This came out just from-
I understand the gentleman.
The gentleman that had the issue.
Yeah, but you still have apartment complexes that still are probably not updated-
Right, so there's-
With the HVAC.
There's cross ventilation in the old-
Yeah, and then you have cross ventilation, and then you have also people with respiratory problems also, from not only smoke, but because the machinery, the HVAC is not properly ventilated. So, that causes a great problem, too, because it can cause mold, mildew, and some other things.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Tillman, are there cases of, or are we aware of any cases of municipalities or counties or states even that have regulated the ability to smoke in multifamily dwellings? I mean, I know it's been limited in, you know, it's been limited in all public places, public buildings, in and around facilities that house children, you know, daycare, things like that. Are we aware of anywhere that has simply said, is that considered discriminatory?
Well, I have not, I am not aware where someone's private residence has been regulated. But again, in all of these buildings you're describing, the public areas can be, and if they're, if you have common ventilation, I think you could make the argument that the whole building is a public area.
Even, even in a private residence, if, if your smoke is affecting someone else's private residence.
Health and safety is something that you can regulate. It just has to be reasonable, and you have to weigh the politics and the, and the cost.
I don't mean to take that comment off the deep end, but I'm just thinking about another, another approach.
But regardless of, Mr. Rudesel has a valid point, I think, in terms of the, the cost is going to be passed on.
Yeah.
There's no question. And, and do we risk impacting?
I, I was trying to avoid the cost question by saying-
Yeah.
But, but the question is, yeah, by going to health-
Health issues, health issues.
I actually think that if you were in one of those, living in one of those houses, and if you, if you took up occupancy without knowing that you had a shared system like that, that you might actually have a good case against the landlord if, for example, you were breathing secondhand smoke. I think that, that those individuals could argue that it was a nuisance or a constructive eviction by-
How about something like, at the time of the rental, if you have a common system, you have to let the rentee know.
For people who have asthma.
For people who have asthma or have those kinds of conditions.
Let them know that it's a-
And let them know that the, the unit that they're going to be going into-
Like as part of the tenant's bill of rights?
It's part of the tenant's bill of rights, right. And that way, that's a choice by the person who's going to-
And I think that kind of, you know, takes us out of the equation-
Right.
-of telling people what they can and can't do in their own private residence because-
Right.
Dangerous territory.
Very dangerous territory.
I had one of my Cub Scouts have an asthma attack when we blew out the candles on a birthday cake that Cub Scout beat me one time.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, if you had a child like that, that's really important.
It is.
Absolutely.
It is.
Susan, how, how often do we meet with SPOA? Is there a regular meeting?
We actually, they meet, they meet monthly. They've actually asked that we meet with them either this, this month or next month. It would be next month because I'm not meeting with them this month.
I'm just thinking that this is an opportunity to have a conversation about, you know, the policies that they implement with their tenants, if we can encourage them to create smoking spots or, you know, put it in their own lease if they're willing to do that because that's, that's up to them.
Designated smoking areas. There may be some of them that have, you know, as part of their rental contract that says, you know, this is a no-smoking property, you can't smoke.
And there are. I know, I know there are.
Yeah, there are some because I live on one. It's a non-smoking, yeah. But it's, it's a, we have designated smoking areas, but it's not that everybody complies.
Sure, but, but then if a complaint was lodged, they'd have some, something to go off of.
Right.
And then also, if you go into a property after you turn it over and you can tell if somebody's smoking.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the walls.
Absolutely.
There goes your deposit.
Well, that's a, I think that's, I think there's two good approaches. One is the SPOA thing and say, listen, this is an issue that's come up. What, what do you think? And then the other side of it is, if we can get it into the bill of rights, they're notified that this, we have common, we have common vents. And if you have an issue that, where you might have a health issue, you probably shouldn't rent that, that unit.
And I think it would be on us to figure out how we would define shared, because I think in some of these cases, people would say, well, we don't have a shared system, but we, you know, we know that because it's an older home, you know, cigarettes, smokes be able to move from unit to unit. So, the question there would be to say, we define what, when you have to include that notification, and that, I would think that that could be its own page, that is its own warning-
Yeah.
-that talks about, you know, if you have any of these conditions or are concerned about these health risks, you need to know that this unit has possible shared-
Ventilation.
Ventilation.
Yep. Is that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I think that that's the approach we should take. Let's, let's meet with SPOA and see what they say, and then from that, from their reaction, then we can come back and have Mr. Tillman look at getting that on the bill of rights. I think you always have, if your information is available and presented, it's always better than trying to come back and enforce a code.
Right.
I think you have more success that way.
And those parties are signed, acknowledging it.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
Mr. Moles, let's talk about caps.
The Department of Public Works is looking for approval for acceptance of two DNR mini grants. These grants come through the Waterway Improvement Fund, which gets money from boat registrations and sale of boat fuel. The first one is a $5,000 mini grant that would go towards the floating dock. We're ready to go out to bid for that. We have the $40,000 grant that we got from State Highway Administration. Got all our permits, and this would be another $5,000 that could be applied towards that project. Estimated cost for the floating dock is around $51,700. We'll see what happens when we get bids and everything. So, a good chunk of that money will become from grants that we've got. The second grant is for installing pile caps on top of the piles. And, you know, there's 457 plastic cone-shaped pile caps, if you can believe it, out there.
457?
57, yep. So, DNR, when they were out there, suggested applying for a $5,000 grant to purchase those caps. Extends the life of the piles because you're covering over the, the exposed core, you get water in there and it splits, and what was originally there was old copper sheeting that was put on. So, we want to take that. Now, it's, some of it's still there. I think a lot of people don't know it's actually copper, which I probably just mess up on them. But, um, yeah, the, it would make the marina look real nice with those put on. The purchase, we've got a quote already that's been approved by DNR in terms of moving forward, $5,808.82. DNR's approved that. So, once we get the approval of the grant, we can set up the purchase order and get that ordered. The remaining funds come from the money we have in the marina account, that $25,000 that we're working with. So, the work in terms of installing those will be done by the marina staff gradually over a period of time. And the same thing with the rowing dock, we'll be doing the labor on that because it'll come as a kit, assemble it, float it across from the boat ramp, set it up, and then install the anchors for it. So, we're excited about moving ahead with those things.
Questions about that? Okay, we have consensus.
Yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Chief, you're on deck, you're up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chief.
Uh-oh. We got help.
We have you.
How are you, Chief?
Good, sir, how are you? I have some audiovisual help if I can assist from the mayor.
Thank you, sir.
In case the audiovisual fails and we have paper. Paper never fails.
Back up.
Nope. Thank you.
Paper never fails.
Hot ticket.
Lord, would it be impossible to get this in place a couple days earlier so that we could begin to at least get your, how you do your charts there, Chief?
The blue cord. We're missing a blue cord.
I know, when I was on my back end of my back end.
Do you need a BGA or anything?
Either Walkwell? No, I don't think I have HDMIC or BGA.
It was here last week.
Uh-huh. You have to get the scape on Baldi. What's that? I should get the scape on Baldi.
I, I didn't touch the cables that day. I wasn't here.
I was in another country.
No, that sounds like a- Do you have cables in the room?
Cables down there. They're antiquated.
I gotta get my glasses on, I guess.
This reminds me of an engineering joke. How many, how many fire chiefs and audiovisual guys does it take?
All of them.
Something happened. Here it is. There you go.
That's what?
If you can just stand there.
I don't know why this is so late.
Oh, no, it does, it does.
It does.
Do we have a key? Yep.
You moved it, no, why? On his back.
That actually looks okay.
Let's just not breathe on it. Let's just not breathe on it. It is the, it's that one.
We got it. We're okay. I think we're okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for this. What's that?
I should have broken that thing, like, you can advance it.
Oh, you can. See, let's see if it works.
There you go. Okay.
Well, good, good afternoon, Mr. President, and members of council. I'm grateful to be before you today on a presentation to justify budget amendment that council has before it for consideration, to add four additional career staff to the Salisbury Fire Department. We'll begin by talking about, and I'm going to try to get through this as quickly as possible so that we save time for many of your questions, I'm sure you have. Essentially, our, our mission is really simple. It's just to provide the appropriate amount of staff and ready-to-respond fire units at whatever level is appropriate to provide emergency services to our citizens in an effective and timely manner. We have taken the position, and not just me, but we've continued the position that we don't really care if it's career volunteer members, a combination of both is really where we ought to be, and that's where, that's the position we continue to take. Many goals, we won't read every one of them, but many goals coming forward. Obviously, we just want to provide the very best-in-class emergency medical, emergency services to all the citizens in our fire district and to rest of the county as, as needed. There are many organizations that set these standards for us, the National Fire Protection Association, the international, the International City County Managers Association, and the Insurance Services Organization, just to name a few. We get our performance metrics from each of these organizations that help us benchmark our performance to see where we're at as it relates to what the industry would say would be critical and, and highly performing departments. So, really, our desire is to respond with that effective and focused response for us to all emergencies at any time of the day or night. We do have a few performance deficiencies that we'll talk about, and I'd like to put them in the, in the best position possible because I think it's really important to have that discussion is why we're here, and base it all on our, our needs instead of what the chief really thinks we should do. So, we're going to talk about that in a second. We have significant strain on our, on our personnel right now where their career volunteer, we're straining our volunteer cadre of members and just getting them to keep up with demand. And when they can't, our career members are, are being taxed also to try to do more with less resources than they truly have on hand. What we will present, let me go back, what we will present is, is the first year of a multi-year staffing plan that I've presented to the administration, and we'll talk about how that gets implemented over a multi-year period and how we do that in a, in a measured and throttled way so that it doesn't create such a financial burden to, to the city. And, and our hopes would be to really reduce that as much as we can, so we'll talk about that as well. Improving our service delivery to all incidents, reducing over/underutilization of resources, that would include our volunteer resources, reducing station response times and our travel times to incidents, those are our goals and objectives in all we do. What, what's it look like today? Today's situation simply is we have 62, these are, we're going to talk about the career section of the organization for a second. We have 62 career authorized operational positions. They work a 42-hour work week. 13 members on four platoons each staff our Fire Station 16 facility on a 24-hours-a-day, 365-day-a-year basis. And then our other two stations, Stations 1 and 2, are staffed with five members each Monday through Friday between the hours of 0:00, 700, and 5:30 in the evening, so daytime staffing. And, which would, which would set up our volunteers to do what we've done for many, many years, and that would be to take, take the rest, remaining time from Stations 1 and 2 and staff those, those stations with, with all volunteers. Here's what we get with our current staffing model as it relates from the career perspective. We're able to staff one chief officer on a 24-by-7 basis, one engine company 24 hours a day, and then three paramedic units 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And then, of course, the other truck companies staffed at Stations 1 and 2 on a 50-hour per week basis. That's what, that's what our current staffing allotment can get us. The units of required service require that there's a minimum of 10 members on duty 24 hours a day and 10 members to cover the 50-hour-a-week daytime stations. That's, that's how we're currently operating and getting it done with, with our career department.
I just got a question. First engine company, how many people are on it?
A minimum of three. Our goal is four. But it will all depend on, on how many people have taken off. We have, we've, we've set a maximum number of people off so that we can maintain our three. Our goal is always four, but our minimum is three.
What's, what percent of the time do we ride with three?
I don't have that prepared to answer. I can get it for you.
Chief?
I'm sorry, 90% of the time we go with four?
Three. Three. Three.
It may be less than that, but that's, we're at the minimum a good deal of time. And, and again, we limit the amount of people off just to make sure that we have the minimum staffing on, on hand. Now, we, we improve-
If you're limiting the number of times people have off, how do you end up 90% of the time having three and not four?
We don't have enough employees.
Yeah, there's, there's not enough full, well, if we talked about full-time equivalents, that's really where we'd get into that conversation. And, you know, without the appropriate number of full-time equivalents, we do it with overtime as well. And as you, as you know, we've reduced our overtime significantly over the last several years based on the recessionary issues and, and all of that. So, we really just aren't able to do it, but we, we have been, we've tried to do it as much as we can.
Are they safer part timers, are they supposed to be making up this?
This, when we had the Safer Grant employees, the absolute, absolutely was yes.
Almost all of them still work for us.
Yes, through, but they replaced the part of the 61 operational positions, they weren't new positions. As you recall, we added four from the 12 Safer to increase our staffing back in 2014, 14, which really, this is a continuation of that to try to keep us moving in that direction to help us with that four. The, the additional four did help us, but as we, as we move through our staffing configurations, try to do, trying to do more with less, it, it really isn't possible without the addition of more personnel. So, what we're, what we've been doing is, the successes that we are able to maintain is when we get our volunteer component to, to assist us in staffing, and we're able to raise that to four, five sometimes at night if we can, but as they are able to participate, we're able to increase that and get a little higher rate, so that's what we're trying to do. So, that's your question?
Yeah.
Councilman? Really, just looking at where we are today as it relates to our operational response, as you can tell, we're, we're a consistently busy Monday through Friday fire department. There's really no, nothing that says, oh, on Saturday and Sunday you're, you're not as busy as you are Monday through Friday. It's just not the case. And our time of the day allotment looks like this. As you can tell, when we have our influx of, of, of citizens coming into the score for either work or pleasure, our call volume increases dramatically during the daytime hours. We're gonna, the next four slides are gonna talk about what our actual performance looks like, and it's divided into career, the first slide or career slide, career division, performance metrics, and the next two would be our volunteers. Now, it's really important here to understand that we're not playing one against the other. Excuse me, we are simply just trying to demonstrate what it looks like when you have the appropriate amount of staffing on hand and how it affects your performance. So, we're really not trying to, to paint one against the other. We're just trying to demonstrate for, for an analysis purpose how we're responding. As you can tell, our, our career in-station staffing is measured at, at two, at a two-minute interval. Their success rate, percentage of time meeting the standard is ninety-one point six one percent. We measure to the ninetieth percent fractile measurement, which means that there's a ten percent, ten percent of the time when we, we accept that we're not able to, to, to respond in that appropriate manner, so, so at the ninety percent fractile measurement, as you can tell, our career staffing is hitting it consistently at the ninety-one percent measurement. This, this is simply a graphic depiction of what it looks like year over year, and you can see that we've had some, we've had some very good years over the last four years with our career performance of in-station staffing.
Chief, is that with the three or four on the truck?
Yes.
I realize putting another person on the truck doesn't take less, doesn't take more or less time getting out of the station. I'm just trying to-
Yeah, it, it includes that as, as we're operating today.
Well, actually, can I just amend that slightly? It doesn't take more necessarily to get out of the station, however, if your standard is four rather than your standard being three, and I know that our target standard is four, it's, it's not. We're operating on a minimum staffing level of three, but if we raised our standards to what we think is the safest on scene to fight a fire, then it would take longer if we were waiting on volunteer response, 'cause then, you know, you're waiting on the fourth person to get there, but if it's in-station staffing, whether it's volunteers or career, if they're located in the station, then it doesn't matter.
It doesn't. It truly doesn't if you're in-station, 'cause this is a measurement of, of, from the time the alarm sounds to the time they get on a rig and roll out the door. This is turnout time.
Just a slight, you know?
So, and you're gonna see in the next slide as we, as we evaluate our volunteer performance relating to turnout, that's prolonged because instead of a two-minute or ninety-second response measurement, we're gonna go to four, four minutes for them, 'cause they're, from their at-home response, so you'll see a slight change in the next slide. So, here's what our volunteer performance looks like at the four-minute interval from an at-home volunteer response and their ability to turn out within that four-minute interval. As you can, as you can see, at the end of that four minutes, our ability to meet the standard is at fifty-four percent, which means that we have a forty-five percent, percent of the time where we're not able to meet that four-minute response, turnout time standard. But again, I think as the mayor correctly said, the difference here is they're responding from home, and you have that travel time to the station.
Is there a different set of national standards from them than there are for, for career?
No. There's, there are two sets of standards, the National Fire Protection Association, there's a seventeen-ten and a seventeen-twenty. Seventeen, it's the number. No, no, it's the number. It's, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's the standard number. So, NFPA seventeen-ten is the performance metrics for all career fire department, and NFPA seventeen-
Depends on if you have three horses or four horses.
Four horses, right, right. So, so NFPA seventeen-twenty is which we fall under is for combination in all career fire departments. So, we're measuring to the seventeen-twenty standard. The way we get to the four-minute mark is the standard for seventeen-twenty says that you'll assemble an effective firefighting force within nine minutes of time of call, time of dispatch. So, we have an average five-minute travel time to various portions of the district, therefore, the delta has to be a four-minute turnout time in order to, to meet the operational objectives. And here's simply a graphic depiction of that performance over that, over a four-year period.
And can I just pause on this for a second? So, so every other Monday at our result SBY meeting, the, each department head has to get up and present on their metrics that we have in the budget, the goals that we have in the budget on where they're at, and Chief Hoppus has had the courage to stand before the firing squad every, every other Monday and present, you know, that we're not meeting expectations, that we're pretty far off, in fact, and that, you know, his department and his team is not meeting the standard. And that, that, I think if anything is kind of salient takeaway, it's this, that we got a problem. We're not getting the fires on time, you know, and in some cases, we're not even getting, we're not even responding to the calls.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, but, you know, as, as, we've had this discussion with the mayor, we can't change the standards. I mean, I could change the standards, we'd be a hundred percent fire department, but we don't create the standard.
Just from a layman's point of view, the idea that the standard, I mean, I can understand the standard for one, and I can understand the standard for the other, but trying to put both of them in there at the same time, volunteer and career, and come up with a number, considering you don't know how far people live from the station. You don't know whose minds are in every career-
Right. That's the-
I appreciate all of those people who go into creating standards for you, but it is a bit of a cottage industry of people who were in your business-
True.
-who are now becoming experts in the business and then becoming consultants for their business.
Sure. Yeah, we-
Teachers do it too.
Yeah. I think every industry does it, but, but, you know, I hope to address some of that in, in the, in the next couple of slides, because we have done some, some things operationally to try to rectify some of those, those disparage, desperate difference in measurements.
Because there's no accounting for how many volunteers you have.
Correct. It's the unknown.
And I, I think that that's the one thing, and it's not, I mean, I, I've been, I was a volunteer for thirty years.
How far did you have to drive there?
I drove from Dear Harbor Drive to-
Oh, okay.
-to Fruitland Firehouse when I first moved down here.
Right.
And now-
Sir, you were in the four, right?
Oh, yeah. And, and, and the thing that you have to understand is, and, and I'm not trying, I don't mean to make light of it. There's a reality. Hunting season.
Yeah, it's tough to get crew.
I'm telling you, it's tough to get crew, but we know we have a paid crew. See, and, and that's what, you know-
It's measurable.
It's measurable, and I think that we have to keep focused on that, and I'm, I'm a, probably the biggest supporter of volunteer fire companies. They serve a tremendous and save, save everybody a lot of money, but I think that from a practical point of view in the city, we've gotta look to the, to the paid guys and say, this is it.
At the end of the-
You know, if your house is going, I want a full truck of guys coming to do their job.
On time.
On time. And, and that's the other thing. The timing is so critical. The worst thing for a fireman is to come, come up to a building and see it through the roof, right?
With, with three or four people.
With three or four people inside. You know? And I would rather have four people coming than three people coming, 'cause you know they're coming.
Right.
I think the scariest thing in my view would be that volunteer showing up at the firehouse and having nobody else there.
That's, that's a good point.
It results in what I just said, but that-
That, that's a great point, 'cause it happens.
It is the worst thing, the worst feeling in the world when you're waiting for your third guy and you're dressed, and the siren's going off, and you know it's a working fire.
And you can't get out the door.
And you can't get out the door.
Yeah.
And it happens.
Yeah.
Because, well, a whole bunch of reasons.
Yeah, and we're gonna talk about what, what our hypothesis is on what those reasons are, but, you know, we, you know, we have a great bunch of volunteers that are doing the very best they can, and, and, you know, we're just, we have outstripped or outpaced their ability at this point, so we're, it's not that we're blaming our volunteers for lack of performance. It's clearly not the case, so they're, they're doing, they're doing a great service to the society at the very best they can. It's just that, as we'll talk about in the previous slide that, or next, next, next couple of slides, that we'll talk about why, why we're facing what we're facing. But from another metric that we're measuring is our travel time. You will see that in the month of September, October, we took a dip in our travel time. One of the reasons why we did that, we, we, we did, excuse me, one of the reasons why that happened is 'cause we made an operational decision back in September that we were gonna start sending whatever staffed units we had in the station was going to start responding first out on all calls within the Salisbury Fire District. Now, based on the previous slides, you know that that was a crew coming from Station sixteen, and is, if they have to travel in the Station one and two's district, that is going to automatically increase the travel distances and times. So, we, we made an operational decision that affected that. I wanted to make sure you understood that, that, but, but what we were able to do is get an, a, a staffed unit to respond immediately or as quickly as possible for all calls, and then supplemented by volunteers as needed to get that additional response, so-
For October-
Yep.
Because you, you being the math and computer whiz that you are, have come up with several matrices and X and Y axes, they're all different, so I'm just trying to keep up with you.
Yep.
If you had let the firehouse in October that got the original call do what it was supposed to do, even if it had to wait, that number would be higher, but you sent out sixteen in order to reduce that time, even though it may have been a longer mileage-wise, you reduced the call time because we weren't waiting for the number from the station that is originally supposed to go to that fire.
Correct, and what we would have seen, what we'd have seen-
That's my work.
See, see, I see, that's what, that's what I love, Councilman Irtin, is, is it because, really, the reason why we trended, we trended it that way, so you could see, this is where we are tracking it. The very best we could do is about sixty-five percent over a, a several month period, and then, but we saw that dip, but we, we, we associated that dip with an operational decision that we made to try to do something a little better. Thank you. So, here is the big one, as it relates to National Fire Protection, Protection Association seventeen-twenty. They're measuring our ability to assemble an effective firefighting force on fires and emergency, emergency scenes. Now, we have calculated that to be three, three fire engines or three trucks, whatever you wanna call them, and a chief officer, and a, and at least one ambulance. That's, that's our effective firefighting force. The reason why that's important is because there are a certain amount of things that have to happen simultaneously when you first arrive on the scene of a fire, so that measurement's really important for us because it's, it's the end result of everything leading up to that. Were we able to arrive and be able to make an impact on whatever it is we faced? So, this is a measurement of that assemblage of a firefighting force when we have three staffed stations Monday through Friday between the hours of seven A, or seven A and five thirty P, and as you can tell, our, when we have staffed stations, we have a really high rate of being able to assemble that response force. It has nothing to do with, it has the only thing to do with the nine-minute fractile measure, nine-minute time at ninety percent of the time, but as you can tell, we have a really high rate of being able to do that because the stations are staffed. There is no unknown, right? There, there's, there's, there's no unknown. We're waiting for three, four, six, eight, ten people to show up. We have them on, on hand. And as you can tell, in January, it's zero because we didn't have any fires during that time period for the year, and then, and of course, in February, we were oh-for-one, and in November, we were one-for-two, but every other month, we were a hundred percent able to meet that, that measurement, which I think is a, is a, is a huge look at how we're able to perform when we have the appropriate staffed units available to respond. The next slide is gonna tell a different story. The next slide simply shows the hours after that five-thirty Monday through Friday and on nights and weekends. It measures our ability to then provide that effective firefighting force on the scene of fires in that nine-minute timeframe. Again, please don't receive this as so, as though we are castigating our volunteer members. We are not. We are just using a statistical analysis to see what our performance looks like, and, and this is because during that timeframe, you have one staffed unit, so you're gonna get three or four, and then we hope that we can have some volunteer staffed units, but we're not able at this point to get all three stations staffed twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. We can on occasion, but we're working to, to that end, which is why we're here before you tonight, but as you can tell, our performance on, on the, the hundred and, if I did my math right, the hundred and eight, hundred and eighteen hours of, of the week is, is not as good as it needs to be. Questions about that difference?
So, it's evenings-
Evenings or weekends.
And weekends?
Yeah.
So, I guess... Yes or no? 'Cause I don't know if I'm asking the question correctly.
Okay.
If you were to move some of your people that are meeting the one hundred percent during those times, so, because this looks like the difference between my history grade and my chemistry grade in, well, any time I took any of it. One was really good most days of the week, and the other one was abysmal-
Right.
Most, every day of the week, so my question for you would be, in looking at these four, how do these, and I don't wanna jump ahead, so Jack, if you wanna just whack that down and say in four slides, you may ask that question, Mr. Irtin.
He's got it ready.
Go ahead. If you were to switch some of your places where you were above the one hundred percent or whatever, the-
Right, right, right.
That one.
Yeah.
If you were to switch some resources from that one into that one and have to bring some of those down some in order to get some of these up just a little bit.
Yeah, it really has to do with, it's, it's a zero-sum game, basically. I mean, you have X resources, and how you apply them is important. We're, we're, we're currently trying to apply every resource we have at the best possible way we can, but there, I, I affectionately call it in, in, at the fire department, cheeks in seats. You have to have people in the seats in order to be able to provide the service. If you don't have the number, you can't ever get there.
And I understand you can't beam them. Say the call comes in at three while they're sitting at one. If they were sitting at three, your number goes up really well, but they're not sitting at three, so I understand you can't-
Yeah.
You can't guess where they're going, you know, where the call's gonna come in.
And the other, the other thing to consider is this is really a measurement, though, if we go back to the slides showing the difference between being in-station and turning out, and having more than four minutes in turning out, that is the, what affects this the most, because it is the from-home response that prolongs that, not, 'cause it's, the nine-minute is the total from the time the bell rings to send you on a call to the time you arrive on the scene, so the real number is that turnout time of plus four minutes.
And yes or no, even if you had three hundred active volunteers right now, they'd all still have to come from home?
No.
No.
No, 'cause you could put them in-
You could put them in.
I'm gonna get to that in-
We've ordered that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to that at, in later, later slides.
Can you back up a slide? I mean, the, the big difference between this slide and go forward a slide?
The next slide.
The next slide is, go back, see, I wish I had the clicker.
You'd be in command.
Is on this slide, during these times, we have multiple staffed units around the city, and, and on this slide-
Oh, I thought you were- I was off. I just said it.
Mind meld. And on this slide, this is when we're primarily dependent upon-
Do you have a slide?
An at-home volunteer response.
I always have a slide.
No, you do. Because I, in no way, shape, or form, want you to think, I'm, I'm sitting here on a piece of paper trying to figure out, to tell you what to do on Tuesday at nine P.M.
Sure.
I'm trying to set, uh, what in my head, chief of, the chief of the fire department and the mayor has asked the council to spend the money to hire a certain number. I'd like to see the graph that you think it will look like if you're, if these four are hired. Is that further on?
I don't have a graph, but I, I can, I can show you a picture.
You can take a red pen and, and, okay. Oh, wow. That's not in here?
No, it's not. If you look at, if you look at the bottom- If you look at the bottom, it'll say FY seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one.
Okay.
So, that's really what we're, we're here before you tonight for, right? We're not getting up there in this FY nineteen and twenty. We're, we're really in the first phase there. So, that's your question, Councilman?
I hope that that, I, I, because I don't wanna seem disrespectful, but as we do these meetings, we find each one of us comes to it from a different angle, and, and I just try to wrap my head around what the four will mean to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's exactly what it means, going back to my cheeks in seats comment. That, that's the number of people it needs to be in on each unit in order to effectively respond. Other questions?
A little simple question.
Okay.
Just for, 'cause I'm an old timer.
Okay.
You don't distinguish between truck and engine anymore, huh?
We, we do.
What do you call them?
Call them a truck. A, a ladder truck is a truck. A, a ladder truck is a truck and an engine is a pumper truck, pumper.
Yeah, but you refer to them as trucks.
Well, yeah.
Get two trucks out of the barn.
Yeah, I just, just, yeah, because it.
Because it confuses the heck out of me.
Well, the vernacular for everybody else, it's pretty simple. If I just use one word as opposed to.
A fire truck.
Right, right, or a fire engine.
A truck's not a truck, a truck is.
The big red shiny thing.
You and I, you and I get it. Council President.
I was a truckie.
Yeah.
So.
I'm an engine guy, so.
Yeah.
So, we'll have that discussion. All right. So really, how did we get here? Again, as I go back to my previous comments, this, we are here simply because of an evolutionary process, not because we have some glaring failure of one section of our organization. This is simply an evolutionary process that every fire company in America has to go through at some point in time. And, and we, we've already traversed this in the city of Salisbury and Salisbury Fire Department. We just need to do a little more to, to go up that inclined plane. And as we've discussed in, in other meetings, as you move up that inclined plane, uh, whether your service demand goes up and that plane goes up, it changes the way you have to operate your fire department. So we're just simply talking about a law of diminishing returns essentially, where your volunteer component can handle up to a certain amount before it just gets overstressed. And it's not because they just threw their hands up and said, I quit. It's simply because they ju, they just can't meet the demand. It's, it's not because of a lack, it's not, it's not a failure. It's not, it's not a lack of desire. It's simply our demand is outpacing their ability to cover those calls. And as that happens, you have to migrate up that inclined plane. You know, we have, you know, all volunteer, volunteers doing duty shifts, uh, paid-on call and part-time combination. We're currently a combination fire department in many ways, uh, in, in all ways. And, and so some of that has to just, we're just making that evolutionary track. We're going to continue that track and we have no choice to follow the track. It's, it's set. We're, we're just trying to pace ourselves to meet the demand that comes before us. So please understand that we're here before you tonight not to, not to throw our volunteers on the bus because they are doing a great job at trying their very best to service. They're being, they're being outpaced by the, by the demand.
They're being outpaced by the population and they're being outpaced by the calls for service. Do you have a map or a chart that shows those calls that are outside the city limits and inside the city?
Ooh, I don't have that in, as a part of this.
It is in the, um, Fire Service.
Going up there, correct.
Right, report we got.
I would say, I would say they probably pace each other. You know, county and city, the, the demand is paced. And I'll, I'll show you based on.
Because when we look in, because I'm, and I'm just saying this to you in a global way, looking from 40,000 feet down, as the county, you know, begins to drop some of their fees that they're talking about charging on new development. The tier map now for the county will probably, because of the, of the state administration, will probably be virtually ignored probably by Wycomico County. We, as a council, are being asked to talk about dropping fees for new development. All of those things have an effect on the daily. Now, in any other business, any other place, they're trying to reduce it. You all don't get to reduce it in some cases, with all due respect to all of you. You love more calls than you could possibly, than you could ever get. You want more calls. I understand that and I'm glad you're there. But we have to have a conversation without saying those three words that we're not supposed to say just quite yet about being asked for money when the demand is coming from someplace that doesn't pay for it.
Sure. Understood.
I think that's a, I think really that's a separate discussion.
All right, that's the three words. You notice I can say that?
Yeah, I know, I know.
I know that they are. All right, then can I approach it from a different direction? In lieu of the three-word thing that is a different discussion, if that were come to fruition, we need to make sure that we know that we have funded more
Yeah.
and be able to put that money towards the funding of those things. I devoted yes 60 seconds into this. If you had said, when the three-word thing happens, which we're not allowed to say, when that money is delivered in whichever bundle or bag or, you know, brown trash bag that comes in, um, that it immediately gets funneled to you for those positions. Because what I don't want to see is this. I don't want us to see us fund all this and that very nice thing you showed me about staffing and have that money come in to be told, well, we've got to, we've got to hire more people. I'd like to be the caretaker of that money that comes from the thing that will not be spoken and.
The mayor has a.
Well, let's speak about it. I mean, let's do it. We can call it the three-word thing, but if I, if I may, but, but here's how we've got.
You pick the gavel up.
He's got it in his hand.
I'm going to get gavelled solid, I don't know.
Go ahead.
Here, here's the thing, though. Um, you, we're, we're working toward an agreement, you know, and, and I hope that we get there. And then, you know, if you listen to what the county council president says and the county administrator and the county executive, we're, we're there. Um, we're just about there. And we've got a framework. But the framework basically does this. It says, rather than some flat rate like the current, we're going to, you know, structure we have with, you know, we pay per volunteer corporation and things like that. Rather than that being the basis for, you know, paying for service, we say, here's how many calls there are. And, and here's the, here's the value of those calls to us, the county, that you're providing. Because, you know, it's cost avoidance. We don't have to build a fire station. We don't have to do X, Y, and Z. We don't have to worry about the pensions of firefighters and things like that. So, so city, we'll just give you money to do it. And that's what, that's the agreement we've had for decades. An expired agreement now. Uh, but, but this would compensate on the basis of a fee for call. So a fee for service, which I think is fairer to us and fairer to them. But, um, I, so I don't think we can necessarily say that once we have an agreement, this money would go for that. It would go for, it would, it would go for all the services that we provide out. And, and then it's incumbent upon us to staff and do the way we know we need to to get the response times that our citizens expect. Um, and, you know, those are based on national standards. So it's, it's kind of exactly what you're saying, but we wouldn't, I don't think we'd calculate it that way. But we, we see it that no matter what the funding source, whether it's safer grant, whether it's, you know, city tax dollars, whether it's county payment, we are understaffed currently in order to provide the response time.
So let me ask this question, if I may. No. I don't have a question. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. So how did we get to where we are today? How did we get to the fire chief coming before you and, and saying, can you, can you, can you please give these, these warm bodies to me so that we can do a little better job? We, we have, we've been evaluating this for a long period of time. So what you'll see in the next two slides, this is the narrative portion of what the slide following this will show. Simply that over the last 26 years, we've had a total growth of staffing of 14, uh, which is 20, almost 26% increase. Our service demand over that same period of time has increased by 150, almost 159%. So just the casual observer would, would say that, um, the, the, the relationship between staffing growth and staffing demand has really not paced very well with that. So, so what we, what, what's happened is, you'll see in this slide. Now, there, there's a, there's an explanation for this slide. The bottom line that you see is the staffing levels line. That number, as you can see, the reason why we put the numbers in there, 54 all the way up to 68, is because when you try to put it all together in one slide, when the other things are measured in thousands, it's hard to get the, 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 the graph right. Um, so, but we wanted to make sure that we could put it all on one page and show you that. Uh, in, in yellow, uh, the yellow bar is simply our population growth over that 26-year period for, for the city of Salisbury. And our, the red line is a, is a number of fire calls and their growth. You can see it trends very, very well with the population growth. And then our EMS line is actually higher than that. And as, as, if you trend lined it, it would probably be pretty close to the same. But as you can tell, that's just a num, sheer number of calls. But if you just look at the relationship between our staffing growth and our called, call demand and population demand, it simply just demonstrates exactly what we said right there, which is the difference is 132%, 133% difference.
But if I could point out also on that graphic, even though we're talking about the population of the city of Salisbury, that's not who our fire department serves.
Right, right.
Because you're talking about the greater Salisbury area.
Right.
Which, what, 50, 60,000 people? Plus you have everybody that works.
Right.
In the city. Which you're talking, at any point during the day, you're serving 100, 120, 130,000 people with everybody that works and shops here.
Right.
So it's, I think the 30,000 population, it, that's not who we serve.
Right, but it.
Yeah, that yellow one, it actually was indicative of everything that's here and everybody that's come in the entire Salisbury Fire Service District. Again, if that had been put up four seconds into the meeting, we'd all take a vote and say, please take these officers.
I can stop now.
Call me.
I got you.
That's right here. That's so, that's so incredibly correct.
Yeah.
Because even if you didn't put the visitors in there.
Yeah.
Even if you didn't put the people who travel in there, even if you just put the population inside the fire, in the Fire Service District, not the city limits, I bet you that thing eclipses, because it has to be on par with the EMS calls. I mean, EMS calls are going to go up as the population goes up. Fire, you hope through all your technologies and all your work, this fire continues to drop.
Right. All right. So what are our options? Uh, over the last couple of years, we've been looking at our volunteer system and how we operate to try to figure out, are there ways in which we can get our volunteer system moving in a direction that can help us address the problems that we've just so, so picturesquely outlined? So what we did was, uh, we, we developed a, um, a, a task force within the organization made up of career volunteer members to, to try to come up with a solution to our, to how to, how to change our volunteer, the paradigm of response for our volunteers to help us increase our ability to staff stations. They rolled out, we rolled out a change in the way we operate on January 1. And simply put, the change is shifting from an at-home response volunteer system to an in-station staffing duty hour system whereby volunteers stay at the station and staff units, um, at, at whatever capacity they can give. Uh, we rolled that out on January 1. Uh, unfortunately, we polled every member of the current member of the department, only got eight or 10 folks that said, yeah, sign me up. Everybody else elected to stay from their at-home response system. Um, so we didn't get the bang for it that we really had hoped for. Um, I understand why, that people don't want, don't desire to change from where they signed up and what they want to do. But unfortunately for us, the eight to 10 people, while we're using them and we're putting them to work and they're happy to do so, and we're grateful for that, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't have the immediate impact that we've got to have in order to correct the things that we've, we've talked about there. So what we've decided with the work group is we, we're going to go through an aggressive recruiting campaign to try to go out and recruit more volunteers. Our new volunteers will have to come in the organization and participate in the in-sta, in-station staffing model, not the from-home response model. All right? So that's what our goal is. The problem with that, that we see with that is it has no, it has no immediate effect. We, we can't get to a recruiting campaign, get them, get them trained and get them on, on, uh, fire apparatus, uh, in, in a, within a year probably is what we're, is what we're shooting for. So, but we have problems that we've got to address now, which is why we're here. Um, but we know it's the most cost-effective way to address it. So another option would be to, uh, the reason why we're here tonight, to increase our, uh, career staffing by four, um, this evening. But before you, you haven't seen it, but we have presented to the administration a four-year staffing plan, a plan that gets us to where we need to be over a four-year period. So some would say, well, chief, why didn't you just come to us with your, you know, you need, if you need 16 people, why don't you just ask for 16 people? Well, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a financial problem with that, first of all. The second is, is that doing it incrementally gives me time to see, to investigate, how can our, can we get our volunteer level raised to the point where we can, we can, don't have to hire 16? So being the optimist that I am, that's kind of the reason why we've developed the four, four-year plan. Uh, that's not to say that, uh, we're, we're not going, we don't have the plan. We have a plan in place, um, that we would like to execute, given if certain things happen and our volunteer, we can't get our volunteer, uh, component to, to do the things that we need by increasing the numbers. I think Council, Councilman Irtin said earlier, if we had 300 volunteers, what could we do? We could do a lot with 300 volunteers. So our goal would be to do that. Um, but really, we've made a contingency plan for in case we can't get that to happen. What do we do next?
How many volunteers do we have?
Well, we have, according to the code, we have, uh, the ability to have 120. We have somewhere, and it ranges between 90 and 96 on any given day you're, you're measuring. So, um, but what we know is it's going against volunteerism, the, the trend in volunteerism in the country. So we're, we're actually proposing to go against what the trends in volunteerism is in the country. And that's say, oh, we're going to get more. Uh, the reality is it's, it, it's either stagnant or going the other way. But we're going to do the best we can to recruit and try to then retain those members. That's, that's really what you pay me to do to try to bring this in as in cost-effective way as possible. So, other questions?
So you have 90 to 96.
Yes.
But you only have eight to 10 that have said, we're going to be in the house during those overnight hours and weekend hours.
That formally agreed to do that, yes.
Where your, all the red doesn't get up to 100%.
Yeah. That's, that's formally agreed to do that. Now, what I can tell you is since we rolled this out, we have seen an increase in volunteer station, in-station staffing, just in an unofficial, because those people who didn't sign up.
Hang out.
Yeah, they just come and hang out because they want to be out there. So, so really, it's, it's kind of this.
We're going to hang out at PTA in an hour.
Okay. Well, good luck with that. The good news is that we want to continue and maintain our combination system. That's really the goal. We, we know that to become an all-career fire department is very expensive. Um, and it really is not the most cost-effective way to do it. So what is the recommendation? A recommendation, reason why we're here, but we did all of that to get to this last, next to the last slide. And that is, um, to tell you what the plan is. Uh, our plan is to consolidate the 1E and 2E shifts at Station 1 and 2's daytime staffing, reallocate those 10 people to each, to each of the four platoons. And then, and then to hire four new firefighters, uh, which would give one shift or every shift one more, which would get us to this point that Mr. Irtin saw on my handy-dandy table here of having enough, enough staff to consistently staff two capital pieces 24/7. And when nobody's off or we have additional volunteers to get that third capital piece staffed 24/7, 365. Does a few things. It relieves, it relieves this already stressed volunteer system to the degree that we can. But it does guarantee us to have at least two capital pieces staffed 24/7. And then hopefully, a third capital piece staffed with any combination of career and volunteer members that are, that are going to be on duty. So that's the goal. The current request, based on where we're at in the current fiscal year, is 116,000 for 2216. Um, that is the current request before council tonight via, via budget amendment. So question on how we get there. We have done the, we've, we've forecasted our current FY 17 budget. And our forecasting shows that we'll have, we'll have a dis, a significant surplus in our, um, in our salary accounts, as well as, um, there are, there are several areas where we could reallocate surplus funds that have, we've, we've, the city has incurred. We've, we've sold two ambulances and received a little more than $86,000. surplus, we received $86,000 from the sale of those assets that we have, that, that just went to the general surplus fund. So, we have the money in current year 17 to make this happen with a zero impact on FY17 funds.
Is there any concern about knowing where we get career firefighters from? Many times, they are volunteers or people who are, are serving in other fire departments in this area. What I don't want to see is, in, in the hopes of shoring up this problem, you go from the eight to 10 down to six, six to eight, because, or, they come from some other jurisdiction in the county, which because of our agreements, we go and we do at the same time, so there's less people out there. I know you can't say, "I'm only gonna hire them if they're, if they're firefighter people from, from somewhere else, some other jurisdiction where they're already career," because I, I, I'm gonna say this out loud, and I, I know everybody's gonna say, "Wow, that's a little over the top." But you say it's too expensive for an all, all-career...
I can retract that.
No. I, I think you are correct. Volunteers most certainly reduce the cost, but it is 2017 and not 1957, and that is going by the wayside.
Yep.
So, I would suggest to you, at least for the rest of my time here, what I would love to see is your plans for getting there. And any savings that you get from volunteers, we will all hail, and we will have a ticker-tape parade, but this is, this population is not going to go down, and, and, and we need, we need to head in that direction. So, it just, I just, it, it, I feel very sorry for you sometimes, because sometimes it's almost as if you're chasing the proverbial tail...
Right.
And, and always having to come in and say, "Help me shore this up for a little while while I, whilst I try and figure out what happens."
Well, we, we, we definitely have a plan. We know what the plan costs, um, and the mayor's been privy to it, so as soon as the mayor's ready to release that, I'm sure, I'm sure happy to come back before council and present it formally, um, but we, we can do that.
Chief, I have the three letters, three-word things to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but, well, and, and I, I think we're ready to have that conversation. I think what's critical, and you, you said it, Jim, is, is every volunteer that we can get to be a part of Salisbury's, um, combined organization is, is a win. And we, so we want to ensure that we stay that way.
Absolutely.
And historically, I will also say, uh, that there are career firefighters who volunteer in their own towns, and, and there are some very, very, very good volunteer firemen.
Yeah.
I mean, there, there are some guys that I, I'd go in a building with anytime. You know, that's just what it is.
Yeah, exactly. Ultimately...
Chief, can you respond to Councilman Irtan's question about where they'd come from, though?
Yeah.
Because I think we can speak to that.
And, you, we have, we have suffered for years from that, where we hire our own volunteers for sure, because they're proven commodity that, that really wants to come and join us. Yeah, and we want them, and we want them here. So, you're right, it is that, it's that vicious circle of, or cycle of, you know, do you rob one to shore up the other, and then...
It's on one hand and...
Yeah, yeah, it is, but, but ultimately, what we can say is, "No, no, Jim, I, I know you volunteer for me, and I'd, and I'd, but, but I can't hire you because I need you to stay as a volunteer." It's just, it's just that vicious, uh, cycle, uh, of doing that, and, you, a, a great deal of our current career members were volunteer firefighters in the city of Salisbury. Me is one of them, you know? So, yeah, it's, it is a vicious circle. There, there's no doubt, but the pool is what it is. Now, what I would tell you is that, you know, given an opportunity to, to, um, to bring in a large enough pool of people all at one time, we could, we could, and we could really do ourselves a service by making it a true civil service process, where we recruit untrained, uh, never heretofore ever set foot on a fire truck, uh, people that we could come in and bring in and do an academy, a fire academy, 13-week fire academy, bring them from zero to firefighter EMT. We could do that, but you can't do it for the one-offs. You can't, you can't do it for three or four. You can't, you, you can only do it for a 10-plus class, right? Yeah, you gotta have a class, so, you know, it's, again, it's, so we're, we're relegated locally to simply hiring experienced firefighters, uh, trained firefighters.
We don't do it, we don't train nearby, like, say, the fire, the police department does at Warwick?
We, we do not. What we, a, a few years ago, before my chieftain, um, a, a previous fire chief had, had asked that, at that time, the sitting council to say, "Can we enter into a, a MOU with," I'll pick one, "the Anaronda County Fire Department? And when we hire our one-off, our one firefighter or two firefighters, send them to Anaronda County? Anaronda County's willing to do that, Annapolis is willing to do it." We have, but at the time, the council rejected it, because it really was gonna help us with our demographics. It was gonna help us with all of this, uh, ability to really recruit, uh, people who, what we would call the non-traditional fire, fire, you know, family. I, I came from a family of firefighters, but maybe someone didn't but wants to be that. So, it's, uh, there's a lot of pros and cons to it. Ultimately, I'll end with, I'll end with this, is, our ultimate goal is to staff all three stations 24/7, 365, with any combination of career and volunteer firefighters. It really doesn't make a difference to us. We'd like for it to be a combination, to be honest with you, because it gives, it, it blends the best of everything into that. Um, we don't, we don't have a, we don't have a goal to, 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 uh, get rid of all of our volunteers or, or marginalize it. We don't have a goal, we want to do quite the opposite, to be honest with you. Um, but we do have to get our sta, our ability to respond at a level where it needs to be. The immediacy of the need is simply that it's urgent right now, and, and it requires some immediate action, because we're, our plan right now has a longer-term effect than, than it really will enable us to meet the immediate need. So, I'll, I'll be happy to entertain questions. I appreciate your time and allowing us to get here. Um, but thank you, thank you for your time and any questions.
I want to go ahead and, just to let you know, I, I, I support your, your plan and what you're doing here, and I, and I think it's vital for, uh, providing, you know, one of the core emergency services for the citizens and the residents of our city. As far as shoring up our volunteers, uh, what, you know, first, there, there are some benefits to being a volunteer, I, I guess as far as, as tax benefits and stuff like that. Would, do, is there anything that we can do as a city to, to help, uh, attract people to become volunteers? And do you think that there's something that we can do as maybe promoting with our delegation in Annapolis to help? You know, is there any other thing that we can do as a state, uh, to help reverse this trend, to make it somewhat attractive to be a volunteer, even though it's, it's, it's volunteerism, it's a commitment?
We could make a lot of money if we could reverse the trend and figure that out. We could, we could make a lot of money on the circuit doing that. So, there are two, there are two approaches of that, uh, Mr. Boda, and that, and that, one is the internal approach, and that is, we, we have, uh, we have a system in place where we provide an, uh, uh, we provide life insurance and accidental death and dismemberment insurance, and we also provide a retirement for our volunteers that is, uh, that, that is very lucrative for them to, if, if they want to stick around and, and, and get vested and, and collected after 25 years. So, we have, internally, we have some things in place to get that done. Externally, I would say that we have to do a better job of marketing the mission. And what I mean by that is, we've got to develop a marketing plan. We have something to offer. The city of Salisbury, now, I'm gonna speak in firefighter parlance for a second. We are busy. We are a busy fire department. We have what most firefighters want, and that's call volume, right? We have, we have, unfortunately, we have significant fires and rescues and EMS events, and we have the ability, if we just marketed that, to, to really, I think, recruit volunteers from all up and down the shore, including the state of Delaware, to come and, and be, and volunteer their time for us. So, we've got to do a little bit of job externally in marketing the mission. We have a great mission. We, we have the ability to do it. We, we have yet to tap into that. That's one of the future goals for this calendar year, is to get our marketing plan together, and then, and then to go out and aggressively put it out there. So, I think, I think it's both. I think there probably are some opportunities internally to do that, um, and, and we're, we're talking about that all the time. How can we, how can we get someone to come here based on some benefit? But the reality is, most people want to come here because they want a ride, and they want to go to fires and EMS events. That's what we have to market, and we haven't done a very good job of marketing that, so we've got to do, we've got to do that, and that's the external component.
Chief, can I, can I add one of those internal components that, so we, we've got a draft, um, you know, piece of legislation that we're working on, uh, and bringing to the council. It'll take a couple months, uh, but we're working on, um, a, a benefit, uh, for employees to live close, to live in the city, uh, but, um, it would provide an even stronger benefit for volunteer firefighters to live in the city. And that would be, and we're, we're looking into, there, there's some discussion at the state level as to whether or not municipalities are empowered to do that, um, or if we need enabling legislation, uh, but it would be, uh, we're looking at a property tax abatement. And it would be a, you know, a big financial benefit to a volunteer firefighter who lived in the city. Now, recruiting volunteer firefighters from up, up and down the shore is great if you have an in-station staffing model, and they have to be in-station. That's the only way they get to ride to a fire. But if you really want to recruit people who live in the city, uh, or encourage volunteer firefighters to live close enough and in the city to respond quickly from home, then, you know, this would be one way to encourage them to, you know, say, "Hey, you know, don't like property taxes? Want to be a volunteer firefighter?" You know, here's an abatement.
Yeah. So, Mr. President, I, I was remiss in recognizing the members behind me.
I'm going to, I was just going to do that.
Do you want me to not steal your thunder?
No, you go right ahead.
Um, I, I'm extremely, uh, thankful for, uh, retired fire chief Bill Higgins being in the room and supporting the mission. Chief Higgins is an, is an active lifetime member of volunteer, or Fire Station Number Two as well. He, he is supporting the mission with everything he has, and we're grateful for his senior leadership in that capacity. He's a calming influence in, in a young person's game, so we appreciate his efforts. Also, sitting, seated in the audience is Mark Cotter, who is, uh, recently retired captain and from Fire Station 16 Volunteers, still actively engaged as a lifetime member and, and member of Station 16. Mark actually headed up the task force that brought together our volunteer, uh, response changes, so he was instrumental in, in bringing that all together. So, I'm grateful for these men and their willingness to come and support the mission.
Good. We thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions? Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council and Mr. President, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Good to see you, Bill.
Thank you, council, for your time on that.
Uh, yeah, if we can unplug.
I think we can plug. I don't want to get plugged in, now I can't get unplugged. Mr. Counselor, President?
Yes.
Just a, I don't know if it's a suggestion, or maybe it's just because of the mayor, I would love to know what the facilities and what would be needed to do what Annapolis does in terms of training, and whether or not that is something that we should front-load, front, fund in order to continue to make, I mean, there're going to need to be firefighters up and down Delmar, but then, so I was just wondering, instead of sending people away or, you know, the time that, that young recruits have to, young recruits have to, to go to training, much like what Warwick does for the police officers, I'm wondering if that might behoove us as the leader, the progressive place, the, you know, the population center of the, of the shore to start that discussion, but I'll...
Want us to develop options?
I just, maybe just, I'm su, I'm sure it's on his computer.
Can you just put that on the chair, drive? No more, no more speeches tonight.
We'll have the graphs ready for you next week, Jim.
Right?
Now, it's, it's good to, it's good to see data. It's, it's really good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
It's good to see you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Chief Higgins and I spent quite a few days at the Cary Distributor Fire. I'm sure he remembers that one. Seven days...
You talking about that?
Take care, chief.